Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Selectment Meeting. Please rise, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
There is nobody for public comment. Jason, you have the warrants?
Yes. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred sixty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Dan will be a little late.
I'll make a motion to approve Bill Warrant, twenty-two, twenty-nine, in the amount of seven hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred sixty dollars and six cents. Which breaks down to the town, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Water and sewer, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Payroll withholding, five hundred twenty-eight, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Light bills, one hundred ninety thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Grants revolving, forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars and twenty-three cents. And what are your assessments? Two hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Approve the minutes. January, January third, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting minutes. Everybody read those?
Um, let me just see.
They look to be in order?
I'm looking for it. I see the executives.
And what's your pleasure?
Oh, I see. Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of... Oh, wait a minute.
January third.
Yeah, January third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion and a se- is there a second? I'll second that. And any further discussion? None. All in favor of the meeting minutes of January third?
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here?
Correct.
And I feel like I must abstain because I was only here for part of it before I had to, I had to leave.
Oh.
Okay. Two in favor, two abstentions. We could take that up again when, when Dan, when Dan joins us.
Yeah.
I think that the motion would pass.
Um, yeah, it should.
It does, yeah.
There's no negatives, but, uh, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting minutes.
Point of origin, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, so abstentions don't count as a no vote, so...
That's true.
Those minutes would have passed then.
All right, well, we want to move to pass that.
Well, we did already.
We did. Uh, December twenty, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
He was absent in that meeting, so he wouldn't be able to vote anyways.
Um, no, he wasn't. You're right, he was not here. October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, executive session minute, meeting, uh, meeting Anybody read those? They look to be in order?
Yeah, I read them. They look to be in order.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the special board executive session minutes for October twenty-sixth.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Uh, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, executive session minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
And is there a second on that? October twentieth?
A second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Appointments. Appointment of Danielle Albright, ten eighty-two Main Street, Woburn, to the position of Assistant Treasurer/Collector effective January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is a full-time position of thirty hours a week at a rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour, su- uh, subject to a successful query check. Supplied as her, uh, resume qualifications, seems to be well-qualified.
I'll make a motion to appoint Danielle Albright of, uh, ten eighty-two Main Street, Woburn, to the position of Assistant Treasurer/Collector effective January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, for a full-time position of thirty hours per week at a rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour, subject to a successful query.
Second.
And a second. And, um, any further discussion? Bill, go ahead.
Yes. Rebecca, will this now fill, um, all the needs of the Finance Department?
That is correct.
So we, we fully staffed at this point?
We have a town treasurer-collector, this will be the assistant treasurer-collector, and we have a treasurer-collector clerk.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. All the questions I have.
Okay. Nobody else? Um, motion and a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Appointment of Ian Schneider, twelve South Russell Street, Boston, to the position of Town Planner, effective December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, full-time position to be shared with duties of the Environmental Program Coordinator, thirty-seven and a half hours a week, salary of sixty-five thousand, two twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ian Schindler to Town Planner, effective December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, full-time position, shared duties with Environmental Program Coordinator, thirty-seven point five hours per week and a salary of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars a year.
A second?
Is there a second on that?
A second.
You did, okay. Rebecca, could you explain this? We don't have any, any background paperwork on that.
Yes, so Annie is our Environmental Program Coordinator in the Economic Development Planning and Conservation Department, and, uh, her main role is to assist the Conservation Commission and also, as part of that role, shared some duties and was, um, reporting to Meade Memorial Park and helping with the program coordination over at that site. Um, through this process, she's become very familiar with the projects and the construction projects and the development projects in town. Um, so when I moved into my new role, we posted the position internally, and she has expressed some interest in joining and helping, um, during that transition time. Uh, she was great. Uh, she picked everything up very quickly, and we thought that she would be a great fit for this role.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, so the position will be just called Town Planner or will be a Town Planner slash Environmental Program Coordinator?
It'll be, uh, Town Planner slash Environmental Program Coordinator because the duties will still be with the Conservation Commission and specifically towards their applications and their filings, in addition to looking at the planning board and their applications and their filings.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Bill?
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe it's me. Could be me. I had to sick last week, so a little hazy still. But I don't, I didn't think we were going to fill your old position with a full-time position. We were gonna try and fill it with a part-time.
So this is kind of like a part-time position because technically the part-time duties of the Conservation Commission and part-time duties of the Town Planner position.
So it's kind, it's funded the same way as your position was in the past, half through conservation and half...
My position was never funded through conservation.
CPA.
CPA, okay.
So this position is not going to be funded through CPC monies or CPC projects currently. It's going to be funded through the, the salary line item of the, in the department for the director as well as the monies allocated for the Conservation Environmental Program Coordinator.
Okay, and, and this is already fitted into the budget?
Yes. It won't be, there will not be any increases in that particular budget.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, anybody else? None?
Um, well, yeah, I just had a quick question. So, um, the C, the position of administering the, um, well, how to say, the CPA, you're taking that with you, what you were doing for CPA?
I'm still maintaining my duties that I had with this Community Preservation Committee and helping coordinate those activities currently.
Okay, so this, this position will attend Conservation Commission meetings? Are there any other meetings that this position would need to attend?
They will also attend Planning Board meetings and Zoning Board meetings.
Oh, okay, so all those meetings will be covered with this administrative position?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so it was just Conservation, zoning, and planning? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, Dan, just to catch you up, we're on the appointment of, uh, Ian, uh, Schindler, uh, Town Planner, and, uh, duty shared as Environmental Program Coordinator under appointments, the third one down, uh, second one down.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, anybody else? None. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Appointment? Uh, four in favor, uh, one abstention.
One abstention?
What's that?
What'd you say?
I said one abstention. You abstained.
Why?
Fuck, you didn't vote, you didn't vote yes.
Opposed.
Opposed. Four in favor, one opposed. Uh, appointment of Ian Schindler, uh, Russell Street, Boston, to Merrimack Valley Planning Commission as the Groveland member effective January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ian Schindler to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission as Groveland's member, effective January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just had a question.
Go ahead.
On the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, the meetings, do we just send this person or does our Highway Superintendent go?
So we had, uh, Bob Ericellian originally serve as our commission member, and then when the town moved forward with the Town Planner, uh, the former Finance Director and the Commission agreed that the role could be filled by the Town Planner. So the Town Planner was then, uh, appointed as the commission member, and Bob Ericellian remained the alternate member so that if the Town Planner was not able to attend, there was an alternate member who could listen in and, and report on behalf of the town. So it's not necessarily a highway position, it's more of a planning position.
Oh, okay, I understand.
Or Planning Board member.
Right, so now this, the Town Planner slash Environmental Program Coordinator will be that person?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You have a question?
I have a quick question. She lives in Boston?
Yes.
And this isn't going to be, like, um, a nasty commute for her, day in and day out?
She's been fulfilling the role for a few months now, and I, I know that the commute has not bothered her. I know I commuted into Boston from quite a long time, um, myself. I mean, people commute for work.
And it's a reverse commute, but I'm just thinking, distance-wise, I'm, I'm wondering how long someone can handle that.
Who knows, maybe she'll move here.
There you go.
Hi, um, sorry to...
Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ian Schindler, I'm the current and environmental program coordinator, and thank you for just appointing me as the new Town Planner. Um, the commute, honestly, I guess, that's probably the question I get asked most in this position, and people being crazy, if I really say it's not that bad, like someone just said it is a reverse commute, and honestly, traveling in and out of Boston and being able to pass Walmart and Target and all of that is pretty helpful. Um, and I love being able to save the city to a beautiful town like Groveland, so I promise there's no worry in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, all right, anybody else? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, unanimous. Uh, appointment of Rebecca Oldham, Pamela Lane Amesbury, to Merrimack Valley Planning Commissioner, alternate member.
Motion to...
Effective January eighteenth.
Motion to appoint Rebecca Olden, Oldham, of forty-eight, Pamela Lane Amesbury, to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission as alternative member, effective January eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion, second.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
No.
None.
Why alternative?
Rebecca, you want to explain?
Why not just member? I... So I'm currently the member.
Yeah.
I go to all of their commission meeting member, like their committee meetings, so it, between going to their mayors and managers' meetings and some of their other meetings, there's just a lot of meetings, so this way we'll be able to keep the membership with the Commission and be represented from our land use planning aspect while I can step back and look at things from more of the management side, but if Annie was not able to attend, I would be able to step in and know exactly what was going on, and it would be a smooth back-and-forth transition. So it's just a backup in case Annie can't attend a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. A vote to the board. Vote to ratify the, the collective bargaining agreement with the Highway Department. We just got that paperwork today. Rebecca, you want to explain that?
So, uh, the board had voted to authorize me to, um, negotiate with the Highway, uh, Union and finalize the agreement for the board's signature. The agreement before you tonight is the final version that the town has agreed to.
Uh, so I'm going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the collective bargaining agreement for the Highway Department and the Water and Sewer Department.
Uh, we'll, we'll do, uh...
Separate?
Yeah, we'll do it separate.
All right, for the Highway Department?
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? We had, uh, negotiated most of this, uh, prior, and then we turned it over to Rebecca. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? No. Bill, go ahead.
Um, I guess the longevity bonus. Is that, that must have been discussed outside of...
It was discussed after.
And we agreed to that?
The board of selectmen did not.
But it's in here.
It was part of the discuss, further discussion about the pay rate increase. Originally, they had proposed something along the lines of four, 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 and we were trying to keep them at the two.
How many in place do we have that are fifteen years or more?
One.
That's what I thought. It's, this is not, yeah.
Okay. All right.
And we got probably, before another one comes on board, I'm proud of that goes, and probably another, like, another eight years. There were new, some new people there. Okay, any, any other discussion? Go ahead.
Just, just to clarify, and, and so that people understand that, the, the biggest change here really is the rotation of the on-call person, and, and that is something that probably needs to happen. We've discussed it, and it will cost us additional money, but, um, the person that's been doing it for us forever cannot do it forever, so it does need to rotate, so I think we have to absorb that cost, otherwise it's a very fair contract.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, Water and Sewer.
I'll make a motion to accept the collective bargaining agreement for the Water and Sewer Department.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
This is basically boilerplate, the same as the Highway.
The intent was to make them mirror images of them.
Yep, no, I, I agree. I understand.
Anybody else? None.
Um, just one quick.
Go ahead.
So, um, on, because they already had the on-call, we're leaving that alone for now, that, right?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Excellent. Good negotiating.
So the biggest change in this, then, is, is the clothing allowance?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Anybody else on the discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discussion and possible vote. Trash services update with waste management. Uh, we have, uh...
Oh, we have them.
So we got a couple more on this.
Yeah.
Uh... Okay, anybody who wants to start it off?
I'll start. I'm the District Manager for Waste Management out of Lendary, New Hampshire. I'm also joined by Roy Voya, who is a public service account manager in support of the town. Um, I guess, um, I want to start, actually, I know we've got a couple of items. Uh, I guess there were some questions regarding route changes, the route change update. I, I just wanted to be able to have Roy address anything that might still be outstanding from our question stack. I'll leave that up to the board.
Uh, questions from the board?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
So I guess, uh, from, first question would be, I know you, you, um, had effectively changed up the routes within the town in order to more, um, efficiently get the trash done in the time allotted. Um, overall, how has that worked out from your point of view? Is it working out better than previous, or the same, or worse?
Uh, it just isn't better for us now that we have, like, you had separated some of the other items that got on the list that all looked at the end. Uh, the challenge under the prior contract was that Wednesday was the largest day that we had routing-wise, and we were literally struggling, struggling to finish on Wednesday due to the size of the route. So with, with your support, we did the reroute, we're now running one truck Monday to Thursday, and then we do two trucks on Friday. So from our perspective, um, it's been much better. I, I would tell you that when we had the live Wednesday route, we were significantly hampered in our ability to finish. It was just, it was too many hours in a day, too much, too much work, so that's why we had supposed to fix that. So I, I think overall from the waste management standpoint, we're, we're pretty pleased with that, that decision and, and the support you guys gave us.
All right. Um, next, I guess, I, I took a poll, I, I called folks that I knew around different parts of town to, to, you know, get an understanding of how their trash collection has been over the last several weeks and months, and some parts, I, I mean glowing reviews. Never missed. If they, you know, if they're late a day, they come the next morning, it's great. Other parts of town, however, I'm still hearing some significant delays in, in, in trash, and I, I know some of the reasons are mechanical failure, and I get that, but mechanical failure ought to be built into the process because everything's going to fail at one point or another. So when that happens, is there a Plan B in place when Plan A doesn't work out?
Yeah, uh, yes, yes, there is, and it really depends on the time of day that we have the failure. So if we have it early enough in the day, we would immediately obviously just have the technician, get out there, try to fix the, the issue. If it's not fixable on the road, option two would be driver comes back to the yard, we get another truck, he goes back out. Um, the third option is really when it's so late in the day, there's just no way to get it fixed, and at that point, you know, we need to be reaching out to, you know, like Rebecca, and tell them what happened, where we're at, and then, um, at, at that point, make a commitment on recovery. Now, if we have other trucks that are out and about, it's, it's, we would take that as an opportunity as well, but it depends where they're at, and the truck has to be empty as well, uh, so that we only have Groveland, you know, trash on it or recycling on it, so, uh, hopefully that answers your questions.
Yeah, that, that, hopefully that, it works that way in, 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 um, in practice as it doesn't theory. My next, my next comment has to do with, and don't take this personal, because I have this issue with every company worldwide.
Sure.
Your customer service is less than, um, I, I don't want to offend you. Your, your customer service needs some work. It, I guess is the best thing I can say. The communication is lacking, and it's really, it's hampering our ability here to communicate effectively with the residents of the town of what the heck is going on at any point in time. Our border health is being overwhelmed with calls and emails that they just don't have the bandwidth to handle, and when they reach out to someone, uh, for lack of a better term, they get crickets. And, and this just isn't helpful to anyone, and, and don't take this, I have this problem with everybody. The customer service overall is, is, is not an area that companies put a lot of resources and effort into. Most of their customer services, again, don't take this personal, but they suck. So what do we do to correct that problem? Increase the communication, take the pressure off our border health, and get more communication to the residents when things aren't done on time so they know when it's going to happen, so they don't overwhelm our resources here?
Yeah, I, I, it's a great point, and as, um, like you mentioned, I'm the District Manager, I'm also a longtime, uh, with Spanish, my Customer Service Manager. I, I will tell you, there's two pieces of it, right? There's the call center piece, if people are reaching out to the call center, that's been an, an ongoing challenge, we, we'll struggle with that. But that one's a little bit tougher to fix in the very short term, but the second piece of it is very controllable, that's the communication that needs to come from the local district, which in our case is Lendary, that needs to go to, um, I believe, we've been working with Rebecca more recently, you know, as timely and quick as possible so that we can get information posted, you guys can get information posted for that. So I, I will tell you that in the past couple of weeks, we, we've had several instances where, uh, we dropped the ball on that communication piece, no doubt. I'll give you an example on the eleven reroute in Amity to, to the town on updates from, uh, delay from two days prior to the storm, and, and we dropped the ball and missed that one. So one of the things we've done since then is, I've gotten involved, I've been working with Rebecca and also the street supervisor as well, and we've spoken about several parts, and the plan moving forward is, we're, we're going to be a hundred percent on that, we'll continue to do that. Rebecca has my personal cell phone, but she can call me directly on. She has a very shivered window, but since we've done that, I really think that communication's been much better, but no doubt, we, we have to do a much, a much better job on that. Um, that's one piece. In terms of why the misses have happened, because I know that that certainly is a concern, really two key things there. Um, we had a, we had a weather event on, back on the seventh, uh, which is a Friday, which, quite honestly, Waste Management gets wrong on, right? You know, we, we thought we were going to be okay to service... You know, we, we thought we were going to be okay to service. We actually had the trucks all the way in town, and, and it was just not possible to be done. So we called them out. That created just a snowball effect, most unintended, of being, being behind all of last week. So, um, that's the bad news. Uh, the secondary piece is the regular driver has been out on military leave, and so we were putting several different assets out there, people-wise, to get the recovery done. So moving forward, we'll do a couple things. Number one, like I said, Rebecca has the information and the contact she needs as well, we need to be a hundred percent there. Um, we have a dedicated driver that knows the town that will be in there until the regular driver returns. That gentleman comes back on two ones, so, um, we should see a significant improvement on that. Um, sometimes when you throw multiple resources at it, in theory it's good, but if they don't know the streets as well, as the regular driver, it causes, it does cause some, some heartache. So, um, a lot of it was driven by guessing wrong on that storm, but that doesn't excuse the, the poor communication. I don't know if that helps explain at least some more recent misses the last couple of weeks. Um, I don't know, Roy, do you have anything else you wanted to add? Maybe anything on the, the call center piece? Because I know you've been working that with some of our own municipalities.
Yeah, yeah, I, this is Roy Boyer, um, yeah. Call, the call center has been, well, obviously we're understaffed right now, like a lot of call centers are, that seems to be the biggest burden. So, uh, the length of time that people hold seems to be the biggest challenge. Um, there's supposed to be a new option that's available now that if the call is going to be less than, the wait time is getting, I think, less than three minutes, um, the customer or the resident has the opportunity to leave their name and number, and they will receive a call back by the end of that day. Um, so that's, that's a new improvement, actually, that option that we had before, rather than having a resident who left on hold a thirty or forty minutes waiting to get a live person. So that's something that we've, we've introduced, and hopefully they'll, be able to take advantage of that. Um, as far as the driver, Tim was talking about the military leave, I, I think he left, what, in November, Tim, because I know it was a while back, and I think that's when we started to see some of the, the misses, where everybody was like, what's going on? Why, why all of a sudden we're getting misses?
Yeah.
You have a, you have a new driver in town that doesn't, he's not as familiar with the streets, it's easy for him to, to miss a street. Um, you know, if he's going down the street and we have, um, two or three people on the street that say they didn't get picked up, that generally means that the resident put it out late, all right? The driver's not going to drive down the street and intentionally drive by some barrel and not pick them up when they're collecting the rest of the street. But, uh, we have been going back and making an effort regardless of the, if they put it out late or not, because we want to do things right here. So that's, um, that's what I have on the call center. I think, um, again, going forward, they should see a reduced call time, but if, if the, if the, um, call time is not reduced, they have the option to leave their name and number, and the, uh, the call center representative will call them back.
Awesome. That, um, that leads to another question, Roy. Um, what is the optimal time that the resident should put out their trash?
It's supposed to be in the contract, says the trash is supposed to be out by seven AM.
Okay, by seven AM. So if the trash is out by seven AM...
And the reason, and the reason we say that, because if, if you, you know, you live in town and you're trash every day, it's eight o'clock, the driver goes by, right? So you think, okay, I can wait till quarter, ready to put it out there. A new driver comes into that seat, that's not familiar with the town, might go by that house at, at seven o'clock. And then, then you're running your barrel while he's gone by, and then they're calling again as a miss. Now, all contracts, whether it's Groveland Boxer, Lowell, Cheltenham, any of the ones we do, all trash is to be out by seven AM.
Okay, great. Yeah, yeah, I've experienced the same thing. Sometimes they're there at seven in the morning, sometimes they're there at four in the afternoon, so I never know.
Yeah, so if you have a different, if you have the same driver, you tend to get the same time when it goes by, but when you have a new driver, even the regular driver will go on vacation, or he'll be out sick, or whatever, so you never know when you have somebody sitting in a seat that's not familiar with the streets. They do it, they move at different, in a different, um, routing schedule. So he may come by at ten, the regular driver might come by at ten, when the new driver comes in and goes by at, you know, eight-thirty. So, um, that's why everyone has to have it out by seven. If it's not out by seven, it's really error, and not considered a mess.
Okay. Um, one last, one last question for me, uh, for now. As we move forward into the new era of trash collection, beginning February first, a, a, similar topic that came up with a lot of residents I talked to over the weekend about this, was, hey, I noticed that sometimes the truck is able to pick up the trash mechanically. Um, and I'm in the market for a new barrel. What barrel do you recommend that I buy? Uh, uh, you know, what, 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 what should I get? If I have to buy a new barrel, what would you suggest? One that can be mechanically lifted, a big one sixty-four gallon, uh, barrel that's able to be mechanically lifted, or two thirty-two gallon barrels that need to be manually lifted? I mean, we're looking for, folks out there looking for suggestions. If they have to buy a new barrel, they'd like to know what to buy and get it right the first time.
Well, you want me to cover that, or you want to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can try.
Yeah. So, this is, this is sort of a, it's a great question, and it, the answer is challenging, because, um, in towns where we have, you know, totes, right? We have a toter by a company called Capdade, and they're very sturdy. If we have a very sturdy toter like that, we can use the arms to dump it, it's certainly more efficient, and, and everything works great. But going to like a Home Depot or something like that and getting a, a, not a low quality, but just not a commercial-grade toter, if we try to use the iron or something like that, it, there's a good chance that the, the arm, because it's got such strong hydraulics, it's going to damage that. So that's why it's not really an easy answer. Um, the driver can look at it and make an assessment if the barrel, um, you know, obviously we need a cover, the foot's over, they have wheels and everything, he'll make an assessment if it's strong enough, and if it's not, he'll get up and, and do it manually. Um, that, that's really a complex answer to a seemingly simple, um, seemingly simple question. We would love it if we could use the arm to grab all those, because the driver wouldn't have to get out, right? And it would be a lot more smooth, but the challenge is some folks by the lower-end barrel, and then the arm, the arm was just annihilated. So it's going to be very heavy duty, I guess is the best way to put it. And either do you point a sixty-four gallon, or, or, I don't know, I don't know if they would do ninety-six, but we used to sixty-four.
Yeah, because they had a two-barrel limit, and that was just going to be a thirty-two or four, or sixty-four.
Gotcha.
Sixty-four.
Yep.
Yeah, if you, if you notice in any of the towns that I do, I made a collection, those carts are pretty durable, they have a steel bar to go across in front of them. Those can take a real beating, but like Tim said, if you buy one at Home Depot, generally one squeeze of that is going to take it and just crush it, so.
Right.
Okay, then, um, I, I thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your answers and your honesty in some of these situations. I know it's not easy, um, so hopefully we can, uh, these problems get ironed out, and it gets smoother and smoother. And, uh, if not, Rebecca's going to give me your cellphone number, and I promise, I am-
Absolutely. I, I wouldn't hesitate to say, Rebecca, anyone is, certainly have that number. I do want to answer, and Richard asked a question about why does it take a, a week to have a miss pick up recovery? It should be twenty-four hours or less. Again, if it's extended beyond that, it's some of the things we've just described previously. But typically the recovery's twenty-four hours or less. That's what it should be. Um, and we just need to be better on the communication, which, again, a short window will sound better, and we need to, to continue to do that moving forward. And we do appreciate your patience.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, Dan, you got anything? Kathy?
Um, yes, I have, I have a few questions for you. Um, Kathy Kestner Nelson on the board, and, um, I work with Roy when we were talking about the routes and changing the routes. Um, but what I see happening right now is that we talk about, and we say improve communication, but we don't really specify exactly what that means and how is that going to happen? So when a driver completes our town and goes back to wherever, Londonary, I guess, how does this driver prove that he or she completed the route, the streets that day? Is there a checklist?
There are checklists. We, we have computer in the truck, um, and they're using computers in the truck. Now, I will tell you, we don't have every house listed in that computer. But in essence, what happens is the driver does it, um, if he's a regular driver, he knows all the streets, all the houses. If it's a fill-in driver, they're provided with a map which shows the areas that need to be done. We are able to verify whether the driver was there or not. Okay, so if you were to call and say, hey, we have a, a missed street, um, we can go on the system and, and do a GPS trail where that driver went, and tell you, say he was either there, or she was there, or they weren't. And that gets into what Roy talks about with, if we've been on a street, we're going to pick up everything itself. So I won't, you know, there are instances where we, we missed a street, or, or more than one instance. You know, we had some Saturday, and those have all been squared away, but in essence, we've done a GPS crumb trail that we can look at and determine if everything was done.
Okay, well, if, I have to just, I'm going to be somewhat blunt about this. It's, the crumb trail is not working, because yes, we can, I can find out three to four days later what happened, but on the day that it happens, when it's happening, when our residents want to know what's going to happen next, we are unable to know what happened on that day with that driver. So if he has a computer, why can't that information be sent to our town administrator directly, you know, with the big done? You know, why can't we have that in real time? So that if a resident does call, we have something to say other than, oh, we'll call Waste Management and get back to you. People are sick of hearing that. I'm sick of saying that. Um, and we keep going around the circle. So the question is, what can you give us in real time that shows that the route was completed, or that the route was not completed? One resident just said, all I'd like to get is like the phone call, the reverse call that we do, that says the Tuesday route wasn't completed, will be done on Wednesday. That would be, make me happy. They understand things happen, the frustration is, the call center, I've been through that, I've been through that too. That's frustrating. We don't have a code for Groveland, so we get mixed in with everybody else. So we should probably have a code, but the, the best thing you could do would be to just give us that real-time information off the truck. Can we have that?
This is, this is what I would tell you. Um, what we do in several other communities is we provide an end-of-day update from, we are two roadways that are in charge of all the drivers. I, I would be glad to have Groveland, uh, uh, we send that communication to every day. Um, it trends of sending the, the trail every single day, I'm going to be honest, it's really not feasible, given the number of municipalities that we deal with.
No, what, what you're saying sounds good.
Go ahead.
What you just said, the end-of-day report. If our town administrator, border health could have that, then we would know if he's, if the route was not completed. We would know by, what, four o'clock?
Um...
What time of day?
It's no later than five, but typically in that four to five range here. Um, again, we can send you, we can say that it was done. Um, now, the foot side is the other one, where you talked about where we finished, that's a whole different animal. That's when we dropped the ball on that one update, and if we're not going to finish, then we need to be in touch with Rebecca and say, here's where we fell short here in the street that we didn't get done, and then you have the information as already that you need to do a talk to those residents. Does that make sense? That's what we typically do in most municipalities.
Okay, because, yeah, we're not, that doesn't seem to be happening for us. So you think, you feel that you can give us a real-time report daily, and you can give us an immediate report when something goes wrong? That can be done?
Yeah. Yeah, I can do an immediate report when it's, when we're not going to finish.
Okay.
And we're not going to finish the, these are the streets and the area that we won't finish and need to recover. That one's easy. The real-time report is really just honestly, it's going to take the form of an email confirming to you that all roads were cleared. We wouldn't have that crumb trail, you know, printed out daily and, and, it's just, honestly, it's, it's, it's pretty cumbersome to do. But if there's questions about whether it was done, and people are challenging on it, we can do it, you know, on a one-off basis. But I, because it's, it commits to sending that report every day, but I have no issue with making sure we tell you at the end of every day, we finished. Um, and quite frankly, we should know earlier if we're not going to finish. So the, we're not going to finish notification should come earlier than that five o'clock time. It should be as soon as we know, um, the driver handled it, he's, yeah, it makes sense.
Thank you. That would be excellent. My, my last and only other thing was to ask, just to confirm one more time. You mentioned two trucks are on Fridays, so you, every Friday in this town, we do have two trucks?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jason? Uh, I got a couple, uh, comments, questions, comments. Uh, you, you keep saying that you're going to share, uh, the, the cellphone, or share the information with Rebecca. Uh, how about the same thing with our, uh, the trash coordinator, who's also receiving calls from the border health? Uh, she should be able to, uh, get that information too, uh, directly from the company, and...
Absolutely.
Uh, and I don't know if she has a cellphone, but that should be shared with her. Uh, and, uh, how long have you had that second truck on Fridays?
On Friday, since, yeah, we re, we renewed the contract, correct.
Yeah, August first, we started the, uh...
Then how come I'm looking on this sheet, a trash, uh, health trash complaint log, how come I'm looking at probably ten, uh, trash not collected on Friday? Uh, trash not collected on Friday for three weeks. Uh, trash not collected, again, trash not collected on Friday, three weeks. Uh, how, how come there's so many of them on Friday if you got, if you got two trucks?
I can't speak to why on Friday, it, with the two trucks. I, I would tell you that if anybody who is indicating three weeks of a miss, I would, I would be more than happy to look at to how, you know, what happened there. Quite honestly, I would tell you that the likelihood we miss anybody three straight weeks is not that, is really not likely. Um, I, I'm just being honest with you. So if you have specific, uh, complaints, I, I can then go back and use that tool that we have, and determine whether or not we were on those streets on those given weeks.
Well, it looks, it looks to, looking at this, uh, at this printout, Ashcroft Terrace, Pike Drive, Pandora Drive, they're all in the same area. So it looks like on, uh, the, uh, the date was the tenth that's listed here, so trash not collected on the Fri, it would have been a Friday before that. Uh, it looks like you missed that whole area. Uh, and, which brings me to another question. In this day, day and age, with the, uh, GPSs that are available, why can't the truck have a GPS so he can put in the actual street if he doesn't know where he's going? And I may know that might be corrected in a couple of weeks when the regular guy gets back, but if he doesn't know the town, can he key it in on the GPS?
Um, manually, to do it every, every day, let's say I'm covering a route, it would take them hours to plug those in. So what we do is, that's, I think Roy mentioned, we, we have the route listed, which, which is to cover the entire town, okay? And then we have a map that they're provided. So that's how we operate.
Is there a GPS in the truck?
We do, we do, yeah.
Well...
So, so what I would say is this, here's one solution that we typically will opt for. Let's say you have a street, or streets, or specific homes that keep getting missed. Um, we can put in what we call hotspots, and those could get entered as specific entries, so that no matter who's doing that route, they know, not only do I have to follow the map, I got to make sure I get this specific street done. But we don't enter, we don't have every single home address entered into the system.
Well, and, and that makes sense, but, uh, as far as the street goes, if the person is unfamiliar with the town, if they could, uh, put in the street, certainly, Ashcroft Terrace, Pandora Drive, Pike Drive, they're all in the same area, Ashcroft Circle, no, I don't see that on here, uh, they, they could, they, they missed that whole, that whole section. And, uh, so, uh, and here, here's a, here's a complaint, it was Center Street. Uh, trash not collected from Friday, and it's Thursday, uh, from last Friday. Uh, here's another one, it's Saturday. Trash not collected last Tuesday. So, uh, it, that, I, I can't believe that all these people putting it out- people putting it out late. I know, I, I see some of the addresses, and I'm familiar with the way some of the routes are run, and they're not on the front of the route, they're on the back end of the route, or in the middle. Uh,
Yeah. And I'm sorry, just to clarify too, if you see full streets like that, that those aren't late put out. That's the driver missing it. Now, I, I would, I'm going to assume, and it's a very strong assumption, that it, it's going to be the scenario that I described where we have a new driver that just pops in and does the route. That's why we said, look, the regular driver's not going to miss that. And now we've put a replacement swing driver in, and so he gets back. So now you've got the same person filling in week after week for, you know, in the case of this guy, four or five weeks. It shouldn't, it shouldn't happen. It should be as if the regular driver's there.
Uh, Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, you, you had mentioned the 10th, so it would have been the Friday before that. That's the 7th, that's when we had the storm. Okay.
That's correct. And we, and that was the one, we made the call to run, and we shouldn't have. We sent the trucks down, and we had to call them back from town. Because we brought the folks in, went through their free trip, got them down there, we pulled them off the side of the road for an hour or two, they come in, they go through their whole thing, they're burning, what they, you know, DOT hours, and they can only work so many hours in a week. So normally, we would go back out on Saturday. In this case, we did not have the hours to do that. And that was purely on us because we, I guess you'd say, we guessed wrong. It's an imperfect science. We want to be out there so you don't get those phone calls. Sometimes we make a call, and it's wrong. Um, I'd like to think in most cases we, we do, but we do take safety very seriously, and, and the driver's safety, and the community's safety. So, um, yes, we have the, the mix up on the 7th. That caused the issue on the 10th, which we outlined, and then really, honestly, all last week. It created, it just created a ripple effect that carried through the week.
Now, it seems that, uh, since they got, and I'll call it, the new truck, which is within the last couple of years, the split load.
Okay.
Uh, it, it seems to me that, that split load truck is not working. It was, when, when they, uh, when they had the, uh, the one truck, where they would come around and pick up the trash first, and then dump it, and then come back, and pick up the recycling. And it, it just seems like the, this so-called new truck is slowing them down. The, the hopper is, is a different size. I don't know whether they, they have to empty it more often. Uh, but it, it seems like the, the older, uh, backload, uh, truck seemed to work better.
I, I would tell you that, um, that logically, it doesn't make sense. I would tell you that we, when we did the contract, we did it with what we call a co-collector. So we're able to service it more efficiently, generally speaking. And we do it with one person instead of two. So that's one piece of it. Um, in terms of the, the body size, you're right. And this is why we had the issues on the Wednesdays, right? It's a split body, it's 60% trash, 40% recycling. And if we try to do too many homes on a given day, it shows up too quick, we end up having to go to an extra dump front. That's why we took that Wednesday route. Monday through Thursday, we smoothed everything out, and then Friday, we added a second truck.
Okay. Uh, anybody got any other questions? Uh, Laurie, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah.
Need a microphone, Laurie.
Anyone identify yourselves so that the, uh, 2.3 million people that are watching can, uh,
[laughing]
get the information. Um, Laurie Benson, 5 Marie Ave in Groveland. And I'm also the trash, um, contract administrator for the Board of Health in the town. Um, Tim, I'm receiving a lot of complaints from the residents now. When you do use the truck that has the forklift mechanism, it is crushing their barrels.
Yep.
Right.
So, you know, how would Waste Management be able to provide the rugged barrels to our town for the residents? Or what, what's?
Um, no, that's typically at the front side of the contract, Laurie. They, they will, Roy would stipulate that with the, with the town. And it would be a scenario where everybody has them. We typically don't provide them on a one off basis to folks. Now, what I can tell you is, if we damage one of the barrels, because the driver tries to use the arm and he breaks it, he or she breaks it, we will reimburse for that. And then we're also going to talk to the driver and say, you can't use the arm on that barrel anymore. But generally speaking, it's usually all done at the outset, because it's a commercial grade toter. Um, we wouldn't, Roy, I'm assuming we don't do that in any other municipalities where we allow them to buy it directly from us. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay. But if there's a damaged barrel, Laurie, we will reimburse it, you know, as long as, and then we'll coach the driver, hey, you know, we, we went and got this replaced for them. We'll get them a new one, but you can't use the arm on that. It needs to be done manually.
Right.
Okay. That would be very helpful. Um, also, since, I would have to say, since Christmas, I have been overwhelmed with trash problems. And Rebecca and I discussed it. We were wondering if, you know, when you know the holidays are coming, would there be any way that you could have, you know, in preparation, two trucks in town? Because you know that there's going to be a huge amount of trash due to Christmas.
Yeah. Roy, I'm going to let you, you take that.
I didn't hear the question, Laurie, I'm sorry.
Um, since Christmas, I've been overwhelmed with, um, you know, trash problems. And Rebecca and I had discussed it, and we were wondering if during the Christmas season, if you could just kind of be proactive and have two trucks here, since we have, you know, overflowing amounts of trash because of, of the Christmas holiday.
Yeah, I guess I did, I might understand what the question is. Right. I know you're talking, you're concerned about the holidays and the abundance of amount of trash.
Right. If, if the volume, if their volume is up in a given week, or several weeks after like a holiday, right?
Right.
Definitely. If we can put another truck on the street to make sure that we get everything.
Yeah, I, I'd have to get Jim's approval on that. There's a huge cost to, to putting another truck out there. So, um, I mean, we should be able to collect everything. I mean, every town's in the same boat. I mean, Christmas time up till, we got the New Year's, they tend to have a lot more trash, and there's a lot more cardboard out there for recycling.
Right. It's really, and, and, Roy, I'm not advocating, I'm just trying to answer for Laurie. It's a common thing that happens, you know, everyone's buying from Amazon, there's a lot more cardboard, you name it, or trash. Um, can we put that out in advance? No, I, I would say it's without a, you know, there'd be a cost involved with doing that.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons why as well, we're going to that two bag piece that we moved to as well, is to have it be, you know, more controlled, so that you get, you folks know, you're not paying too much for disposal, and we can assure that we finish the town.
Okay. Um, my, my next question would be, um, I really have a lot of problems communicating with, um, the route supervisor that I've been told to communicate with. He just doesn't get back to me in a timely manner, so that I can let the residents know if you guys will be back to get their trash the next day. Um, and I just am hoping that that can be resolved.
Yeah, absolutely. So that he reports to me, and that's something that will be the, he was originally scheduled to be on the call, couldn't make it due to a family commitment. But it will, I'll address that with him. Uh, Laurie, the other thing is, and this goes for the comment earlier about the email going out daily, and/or any notifications. If you folks give us a distribution list, um, for that email at end of day, or for any, hey, we're not going to finish emails, if you tell us who you want them to go to, we'll, we'll, we'll get that out to everybody. We do that in several other towns. It doesn't have to be one person on your end, I guess is my point.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. Rebecca, was there anything else that we needed to bring up?
No, I don't think so. I think like we discussed, it was mainly the communication. The communication has been a lot better the last few weeks. Every email correspondence that has been shared with me, I send over to Laurie. When there was an update about the recent decision not to pick up trash on Monday, I was able to get that information, put it on Facebook, put it on Twitter, put it on our website, send off an email to, to the Board of Health Chair, who was able to share it with others. And that gave the residents a little bit of a forewarning. So the increased communication is greatly appreciated, and I know that Laurie and I will work together to make sure that we can disperse whatever information is being shared to, with us, to the residents.
The, the, the other thing, Laura, I would add is typically what I would ask as well, is when you're reaching out to say, does in this case, maybe, let's say you send him an email. I'm going to provide you with my email as well, you pop in me on it. And I typically will follow up with them to say, hey, we get this resolved. And that way, there's less, it's put through the cracks. So we try to hit it from a couple different angles.
Okay, Tim, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Bill, anything to follow up? Dan? Kathy?
I just have a, a quick recap, just to make sure that I took my notes right, I understand, Mr. Kenny, what you're going to do for us. You're going to email a daily report to the town administrator and our Board of Health, um, trash coordinator. In the event of an incident where the route's not finished, a more immediate notification also by email, is that true?
Right.
To the same parties. Um, we're going to give you some hotspots for the driver, where places that they've missed more frequently, because there's a frustration level there. And then my last point is, you said you will reimburse homeowners for damaged barrels. I have gotten some complaints on that. How do our residents apply for this reimbursement?
Uh, I would say if, if you, uh, either yourself, Laurie, or Rebecca, and myself, and, or, um, aware of these barrels and the address, then typically you will literally go along, whether you want to reimburse them or go and secure a barrel for them, or drop it off. But you have done that, I've struck, set it off.
Okay.
Um, you know, obviously, I've, I've wanted, I know how many we're talking about. Are we talking about a handful, something to that effect?
[laughing] I'm laughing. I, I've gotten at least one. I can look through my notes and see if I've got any more. I know of one damaged barrel on School Street. And I can send that address on over to Rebecca.
Yeah, we'll, we'll actually go remind the man, we've done that, and, and, and call and track.
All right. Uh, thank you, guys, for participating. I think we got a lot of questions answered.
Great. And I appreciate your patience and the invite. And like I said, if you get that distribution list, once we get notified, we'll take care of it, make sure they're added to it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on. Uh, summer camp 2022 policy. Matt, you're still, yeah, Matt, you're still on?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Sam.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, we got your proposal. Uh, we'd like to request that the Board of Selectmen approve the policy for the 2022 summer program. All staff must be boosted prior to the start of the program and show valid proof. You're also requesting all children ages 12 plus must be boosted prior to the start of the program, show valid proof. All children under 12 must have two vaccine shots prior to the start of the program and show valid proof. Uh, if, uh, if prior to the program, a booster shot becomes available for children under 12, this requirement will also go into effect as long as there is an appropriate length of time from when the booster is approved, and when the start date of the program is. I'll be happy to attend this meeting and discuss further. Uh, thank you. Uh, you want to start it off, Matt? Uh, and also touch upon, uh, mask requirements or none for the, uh, the attendees?
Sure. Um, so this past summer in 2021, um, we required, required our staff to be fully vaccinated. Um, and then at the time, we were following Massachusetts COVID rules, which were requiring masks to be worn by everyone while individuals. Um, so we followed that, that policy from the state of Massachusetts. When our kids were outside, they did not need to wear a mask, um, for this date. So we did, um, allow for that at 12. I'm happy to say that throughout the entire summer of seven weeks, we did not have one case of COVID, um, come from our program. Um, when we had to do some contact tracing with some kid that came down with COVID, um, it did not come back to, to our program. So we had tremendous success with our approach, and with our own guided, uh, guidelines for, for COVID in 2021. Um, as you know, you know, things, things are, are, are pretty bad right now. Um, we can't predict, um, what this summer will bring, obviously, because there's costs that things would be a lot better. Um, we are currently accepting registrations for 2022. I'm in the process of planning, um, for my 18th year as director for the summer. Um, so I did want to run this policy by the board to see if this would be acceptable to you all. Um, obviously, our goal is for our attendees, all the kids, and, and our staff, to remain as safe as possible. And I think the, the policy that is for you would allow, um, our program to run successfully, for our program to hopefully have a repeat of 2021, where, um, we do not, uh, contact trace anything back, um, starting at the World and Summer Rec program. Um, as we all know, there's a vaccine available for, for children now over five years old. Um, so hence the, um, addition, um, to that, um, part of the policy. And like I said, last year, we required all of our staff to be vaccinated anyway. Um, and again, the, the whole goal is to make sure that, that our children who attend, and our staff who attend, um, remain safe. We, we do not need to shut down the program at any time during the summer. Um, and again, hoping for a repeat, um, and success of the, um, guidelines that, that we had in 2021.
Uh, questions for Matt? Anybody? Dan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to, uh, I don't know if I have questions, just state.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. You, we need to wear a mask when we talk. We do. Virus is high right now. I'm sorry. Thank you.
For the nervous Nellies out there, I'll keep the mask on.
I'd like not to be called in name.
Yeah. I got my opinion too.
Mr. Chairman, no, you tell him.
All right. I'm opposed to mandates. I mean, they don't have them in school, okay? It should be the parents' decision as to what to inject, or not inject into their children. The COVID vaccine that's been approved, this emergency use, there are no long-term studies on the health of children. Okay? It's irresponsible to impose it upon parents. It ought, the parents' rights ought to be respected. And if you're going to use public facilities, you shouldn't impose that on the people of Groveland. And if you're going to do that, I take objection to you using the facility that is paid for with taxpayer money. Okay? I got triplets, 17-year-olds in high school, and there's no mandate that they have vaccines. Okay? It's not even a vaccine, it's a booster shot. If it worked 100% effectively, this would have been curtailed by now. As far as these masks go, it's nothing but a placebo for the nervous Nellies in the nanny state. If you breathe fresh air and you take care of yourself, you can fight, you can fight it.
Dan, hold on, hold, state your point of order.
My point of order is that there should be no name calling or disparaging to anyone based on their point of view on this topic. We should be civil.
Okay. Dan, go ahead.
People have a right to be nervous. Okay? But I also have a right, I believe, as an American, that the government shouldn't impose mandatory requirements for injections of things that were just created under Operation Warp Speed about a year and a half ago. Okay? Unless you can tell me what the effect is of a five-year-old, or a 12-year-old, or any child, five, 10, 20 years from now. Follow the science. The science doesn't exist to even answer the question. So you're going to hurt people that, that are nervous about the health of their children. They might be nervous, but, okay, so, all right, fair enough. You're nervous about people getting it. There are parents that are nervous about the effects of the so-called vaccines on their children. Okay? What about those What about those people? What about their nervousness, okay? Those people have rights too. And if they can't put their kids in the summer program, then what? Mom and dad can't go to work? You know, you're going to affect those people. So they haven't, follow the science. I've been watching this, I've been listening to everything, okay? What major risk are there to children? Children aren't at major risk. They're not.
Go ahead, Dan. I mean, Matt?
This policy was created based on science and based on research done through the American Pediatric Association.
We don't have it in our public school system today. So why do you want to deviate to what the school committee and others in within our town, within our school district haven't followed? So why is your policy more stringent than our current school district's policy?
Because currently in public schools, there are many cases of COVID. And us being a summer program, we don't have a full-time nurse on our staff. We don't have full-time medical personnel on our staff to deal with the COVID cases that are currently in our public schools, including Bagnell Elementary. So it would put us at a huge disadvantage if we were to have a COVID outbreak at our summer camp.
What about the current push for more frequent testing? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that take care of that concern? If the kids were tested prior to entering the program, why wouldn't that assuade you in some way that other people are protected as well?
Again, we don't have the personnel available to be able to track all the children getting tested. And the children who attend the program would need to be tested multiple times throughout the summer to show that they're COVID-free. And the amount that we charge for our program, we want to ease the cost as low as possible. So we would need to charge a lot more money for our program, for the residents of Groveland, to be able to support such policy.
I'm just thinking, if someone didn't want their child vaccinated, why couldn't they go to the doctor and get a test done and give you a note? I mean, you know, you know, I mean, you can get the tests, you can get a rapid test and you can get the other test that takes a little bit longer, but why wouldn't that satisfy you if they paid for it at their own cost?
Can you hear him, Matt?
Barely.
If, if, if the parents of the student paid at their own cost for the test?
It's long. We have a large attendance history at our program. We don't have the personnel to be able to conduct such huge record-keeping and record-tracking for that.
It's as simple as this, all right? You get a rapid test in any urgent care facility.
It isn't simple. As somebody who's an administrator currently in a school, it's very challenging.
Anybody else? Hold on, Deli. Why don't you step up to one of these chairs in the front row and you'll grab a mic and just identify who you are and you have a question for Matt?
I do. Hi, Matt. My name's Catherine LaBelle. I live at Five Stalker Ave. My two children went to the camp last year. Loved it. Everything about it was great. My concern for the vaccine is if last summer went so well, it'd be one thing if last summer was a mess and every week you had people tracing back to the camp and then you had to close and open it back up and, but everything went fine. So why, if someone's concerned, then those people can get the vaccine because it's available. But why make it a mandate? Thank you.
Someone's going to need to repeat that question.
Yes, I'm just wondering why the mandate? Why can't, if someone wants to get vaccinated, get the vaccine, they can. But why make it a mandate when there was no issues at the summer camp last year?
Is the question, why have the mandate now when we were successful last summer?
Yes, correct. If someone's concerned for their own child, they can get the vaccine. But why make it a mandate situation where you had no problems last year?
Yeah, I could only hear partial of the, partial.
Why, if you had no problems last year, basically, why the change in the policy?
Because the current numbers are extremely higher than last summer. Again, we do not, we can't predict what will happen in the summer of 2022 with the Omicron variant and anything else that that may come up. I need to have a policy in place now so that the parents and children who are registering are aware. And again, with the staffing that we have, we cannot support a COVID outbreak. We cannot support COVID testing tracking. If the town wants to provide us with a full-time nurse during the summer, I would be open to lessen the policy. However, we do not have that staffing. We cannot afford, because of our low registration rates, we cannot afford a full-time nurse to be able to handle all that. And, you know, as the director for 18 years here in Groveland, my priority is the safety and the concern of not only our staff, but every single child that attends our program. And right now, in public schools, COVID is very, very high percentage-wise. And again, we can't predict what will happen this summer, but we need to be prepared for the worst and hope for the best. And again, we don't have the medical personnel at our summer program to support a COVID outbreak or COVID testing tracking. If that's something that the town wants to look into and add to our program, I'm definitely open to that and open to talking. But with current staffing levels, we can't support that at this time.
Okay. Anybody else on the board with a question? Kathy?
Yeah, I just, have you surveyed any other summer camps as to what they're stating at this time, point in time?
Um, yes, some of the private summer camps in the area are having the same policy. As you go more north in New England, it seems like the policies are definitely reduced. But locally and in Massachusetts and some programs in Southern New Hampshire are promoting this policy. They are adding the asterisk, subject to change. You know, obviously, if summer comes and, you know, the amount of COVID in our area is extremely low, percent of cases are extremely low, I'd be happy to reduce the expectations for the policy. But unfortunately, I need to go by what's happening now because, again, we need to get this information out to the parents of our children in the community so that they can provide ample planning for their children for the summer.
Right. I understand. And just so, for people that maybe don't understand, like, what's different this winter versus last winter? I'm a public school teacher at, in Woodyer Vought Tech, and we have had to open a separate nurse office and staff at, two nurses. We have learning loss tutors. We have additional staffing. Fortunately, we were given the funding for this. So I can understand exactly where Matt is coming from. And, you know, I wish it wasn't this way. I'd be the first to say, I thought this winter, I'd be able to see my students' faces and vice versa. And it's a tough struggle to not have that happening. I find it difficult because I don't want to be like this. But I understand the reality of what we're dealing with, and we need to go forward to find out what will happen next. I like the idea of putting an asterisk on it because if, if the situation changes dramatically, I'd certainly be happy to revisit it. But I can totally understand that Matt wants to put something out to say, this is what we can say now, and start letting some people decide whether or not they will want to enroll under those circumstances. I mean, maybe we won't be able to have a summer program because of these restrictions. I don't know. I don't want to tell people what to do.
Yeah, and that's what happened, that's what happened in 2020. We were forced to cancel. We don't want that to happen again. I'd be happy to add that asterisk and, you know, even come before you guys again, right before the program starts, and, you know, review, you know, the current happenings of COVID. And if everything is reduced, great. As what just mentioned, this is not something that I want to do. But the fact is, this is where we are currently. Our public schools are overrun right now with COVID. And we just can't have that at our summer program as, again, we don't have the medical personnel to support handling something like that. So based on January 18, 2022, I think the policy presented for you is something that should be in place, based on the structure of our program, based on who attends our program. And then again, I'd be willing to put in that asterisk, that the policy be revisited in the spring. But right now, based on what's going on, I feel that this needs to go out to our parents as registration has already opened for the upcoming summer.
Anything else, Kathy?
No, I'm just personally, you know, I'm saddened that we, that we have to make this restriction. But I do want it revisited. I want to, you know, potentially, potentially, we will get better news going forward. So I'd like to hold out hope that that will happen.
Jason?
Um, I think in terms of whether or not somebody should be vaccinated or unvaccinated, it's the most important question for an individual to ask to their doctor who has an insight to their medical background and history. And I think with a mandate like this, it doesn't allow for that. So it's definitely something that I would be opposed to.
Bill, anything?
It's a very difficult situation. It's a very complex issue, no doubt about it. It becomes more complex when politics are involved, which it definitely is. I can understand Matt's point of view. If he's going to make a mistake, he's going to make it on the side of caution as opposed to the side of recklessness. And I can't argue that point. I agree, it's up to each individual whether they want to choose to get vaccinated or whether they want their children to be vaccinated. They also have a choice of whether to attend a concert, not attend a concert, attend a summer camp, not attend a summer camp, go to a restaurant in Boston, not go to a restaurant in Boston. So I can certainly see and understand both sides of the issue. But at the end of the day, I don't know if anybody has a gun to their head and is being forced to go to the Bagnell summer camp. If they are, I'd like to know because I think that's a crime. But it's a very difficult and complex question. I believe in individuals' right to choose whether they want to or not. I don't know if I agree with it. You know, I've had this discussion many, many times. People say to me, well, this vaccine is really new. I said at one time, the polio vaccine was pretty new too. We have a member on this board who probably remembers being in school and having no choice. He got the polio vaccine whether he wanted it or not. So they gave it to him in school because they didn't want anybody else to get polio. And because of that, polio has basically been eradicated from the face of the earth. There is no such thing as an old vaccine. They didn't pull off a vaccine off the shelf that's 1,000 years old and say, hey, we've got this vaccine that can cure smallpox, but we've been hiding it in the closet for 1,000 years. Everything was new at one time, and so was this vaccine. We still have time. It's only January. Summer program doesn't start till June. So there are still time to revisit the science, the data. And what that data tells us is true at the moment. I think at this time, I'd have to side with Matt on the side of caution, with the caveat that I would like to revisit the issue again in 60 to 90 days to see if the situation has changed dramatically. We've seen a change in South Africa. We've seen a change in Israel. So it is not beyond the possibility that it changes here just as rapidly. And that is my hope. But as has been said here many times, hope is not a policy or a strategy that should be followed. So that is my two cents on the whole situation. And if we could get a 60- or 90-day moratorium, I think that would help all of us.
Thank you. Matt, you talk about you're following the science and settled science. Well, I remember, I remember studying in school, it was settled science at one point that the Earth was flat, but through experiments and data, it was proved that that was wrong. It was also settled science that the sun revolved around the Earth. And then we found out through experiments and data that the Earth revolved around the sun. So when people talk about settled science, most of those people couldn't tell you the difference between a Bunsen burner and a Beaker. And, you know, you follow the data. We haven't had enough time under this thing, and I hate to put the burden on the parents. The parents should be the choice of whether they want their children to get a vaccine shot or not. I mean, it's certainly something new. I kind of concur with Jason that I don't like the idea of the parents being forced to have their children vaccinated just to attend the program. I don't think, I don't think there's been enough data and enough study done to find out any long-term effects on the, on the vaccine or the booster shots. I mean, originally, there was no such thing as a booster shot. Originally, it was two shots, and that was it. Now they have a booster shot. And then, now I read that some countries are going to a fourth booster shot. So I think more study needs to be done. But on the other hand, I'm not sure that this is our decision. I think last year, we reverted to the Board of Health for a recommendation on how to proceed with it. And I think that we should seek the Board of Health to have them weigh in on this, to see what they think. But what's your pleasure? Anybody else got any questions?
Just a quick, I, I respect what Selkmanave said regarding a physician and a child that maybe should, cannot get the shot at present. I think there should be some provision for that. But I also, can't believe I'm going to say this, Ed, but I agree with your last statement, the very last statement only. We did ask the Board of Health for their opinion last year. We did. And I think it's worthy to put it out to the Board of Health again and see what they say for the policy to the Board of Health and see what their opinion on it is.
Matt, how much time do you have, do we have to make a decision? When do you, what's your deadline for making the decision?
Well, as I said, registration is already open, so that's why I wanted to be able to put something out to parents so they know going into registering their child what the COVID procedures or guidelines. what, what, um, the, the COVID procedures or guidelines will be for this upcoming summer, again, subject to change. I, I do want to, um, have on record that, you know, if, if we do not have certain COVID guidelines for the summer, um, I would not be comfortable, uh, being the director of the program. Because again, my biggest point is that we do not have the medical personnel to support a COVID outbreak at our program. Again, if we had a full-time nurse, like a public school, if we had full-time medical personnel, um, at our camp, my feelings on this would be, would, would be different. But right now, we don't. It's, it's myself, it's the onsite directors who, um, are, are certified just like the rest of the staff. We're all American Red Cross CPR AED and first aid certified. That's the extent of the certification of the staff that's present at the program. So that's why right now, because of what's happening, um, in our public schools and elsewhere, I would like, would like to, uh, to, to reach, um, to the side of, of being cautious. But again, I'm perfectly fine. I think Bill said, you know, to revisit this in 60 to 90 days, revisit as we get closer to the program. And obviously, you know, use the current data at that time. Um, I just wanted to come, come to you guys early because we are currently accepting registrations.
Okay. So if we revisit this in 30 to 60 days, that, uh, that's okay with you, with the program?
If that's the board's decision, I'll happily, um, put that out to, to parents that our COVID policy will be forthcoming in that a lot of time.
Yeah, I, I do think we have to run it by the Board of Health. And, uh, you know, this is a fluid situation, though, uh, the longer, I think you can give us the timeframe would be the better.
I just don't want to be, you know, at a position where, you know, in, in May and June, I'm having to, to refund, you know, several families because of, of the COVID policy that, that is, is put in place at, at that time. But again, I'm, I'm happy to, to follow the, the, the board's feelings. If, if you feel that it's, it's too early to put something out, we, we can state that and we can say that, you know, a final decision is forthcoming.
Okay. You, you got, you have until, uh, what, the, uh, the middle of June, the end of June before you start the program?
Uh, yeah, the program, uh, this year is, uh, starting right after, um, school gets out. So that's, uh, June 21st.
Okay. All right. Well, we need some time to run it by the Board of Health to get some, some advice from them. Have you had, have you started the registrations yet? Have you started registration? Have you had any feedback from the, uh, the parents as far as the, uh, the policy?
Yeah, that, that's.
I'm interested in the negatives.
One of the major reasons why, um, I contacted to, to get on the agenda tonight is I, I am getting questions from parents, um, you know, what, what the COVID policy will be for the summer. You know, the majority of, of, of the parents are telling me that they're getting their child vaccinated, if, if not already. Or some of our older kids, they're getting their, their child boosted, if not already. Again, that's, I'm only going by, you know, who, who I heard, I've heard from. I would say that that's at least a dozen emails so far. You know, and, and the majority of those emails again are, are worried about, you know, what, what's going to happen if, you know, there is a, a group of, of children there that are unvaccinated and, you know, an outbreak were, were to occur. You know, what, what would happen with, you know, no medical staff on, on duty at, at, at the summer program?
Thank you.
So if, if, um, if.
I think we've heard.
We were to go in that, in that direction, you know, I'd be happy to, to, um, you know, talk with the, the Board of Health. Maybe, you know, we, we can, we can get, you know, a, a medical contact that, you know, if something like that were to happen, you know, we would have definitely.
All right, we'll, uh, follow up on that. Bill, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I've got, um, one more thing that just came to mind. Along with getting counsel from the Board of Health, I, I, I believe there might be a liability issue for the town should a COVID outbreak occur at the summer camp. Because we basically, the town basically runs the summer program. We charge a fee to be a part of that summer program. So I would also like to reach out to town council to see if there is a potential liability to the town should a major COVID outbreak occur as a result of that summer program. Would we be on the hook for anything financially?
Well, we could, we could certainly run that by town council. Jason, you had a.
I think, uh, I think that would have come to light at all the concerts that you pay to go to and everything else that you pay to go to if there was an outbreak. I mean, it's a sickness. I don't think, uh, I don't think there would be any issue there, but by all means, ask.
I, I agree with you. It's just like if, uh, if it was a major outbreak at a, uh, at a grocery store, I'm sure that there's no liability on the part of the establishment.
But I disagree on one point. On the back of every ticket is, is, is wording that says, we're not liable for anything that happens to you no matter what. I don't think the summer program has that kind of verbiage on the back of their tickets that exempts them from any and all claims, present, future. So there is, there is a potential, and you know what? There's always lawyers out there looking to make a buck, right? Whether they win or lose, they might get the publicity they want, make another buck. Some just want to cover all bases and make sure. That's all.
I think we can, uh, I'll, I'll work with Rebecca and we'll get something out to, uh, that should be, uh.
Mr. Chair, one more time.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Supreme Court had a ruling.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Jesus Christ.
Jesus. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
If you're going to talk to town council, find out if it's constitutional though. Not that they're the end all on that, but there were some cases that were ruled on last week. You can't withhold, I guess, Medicaid funding apparently if, uh, under the power of the purse of the, uh, tax and spend clause of the Constitution. However, the mandates themselves, private entities can impose that, but, uh, it can't be, uh, from the government imposing them on the private sector. So I don't, I haven't read the devil in the details on it, but is it even constitutional, the mandate in a public facility, that the people have to get it? It's being challenged, um, and it should be challenged. It is a, uh, individual right, uh, you know, my body, my choice. How about that, folks? Heard that for 50 years. So, um, how about this time? Thank you.
Okay, we can, uh, we can run that, uh, we can run that by. Sometimes you learn more from the dissenting opinions than you do from the, uh, those in favor. But we can, we can run that by. Oh, Matt, we'll, we'll get back to you. We'll, we'll run it by, uh, Board of Health and, uh, we can get, we'll, we'll try to revisit that as soon as we can.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next, uh, Government Study Committee, Future Charges of the Committee. We have a, uh, a letter from, a note from Joe DeMore to the Selectmen and, uh, town attorneys, uh, on, um, everybody read that? The, uh, did everybody read that? The, uh, the letter from, uh, letter from Joe DeMore, who was the, uh, the, the head of the, uh, Government Committee, Study Committee that came up with the Town Administrator Rule Regulation. It hasn't, uh, hasn't been, uh, I don't think it's been written yet, has it, Rebecca?
There is a draft bylaw that was shared, but nothing was officially adopted.
Okay. My opinion on that is that, uh, that the Selectmen could be working with the, uh, with the town council to draw up that. And I, I don't know if we need any further assistance from, uh, the Government Study Committee. I think we can handle it, uh, on our own from here on in. It seems like it's a, a pretty easy, uh, step to get that written. Anybody got any feelings on that? Bill?
Yeah, considering the heavy lifting that some people don't want to do, I think we should just let the Study Committee continue with their work and carry that ball right across the finish line. Touchdown.
Safety. Uh, Dan, you have something?
What work don't we want to do? What do they need to do?
Well, that's what, it just needs to be, uh, in draft form, which is really, uh, from the, uh, uh, town council and, uh.
I think we should review it. I mean, the last time I checked, which is a while ago, there was a draft bylaw up there that I thought was misleading because it wasn't actually what happened on the TA position. So I'd like to circle the wagons, maybe get them before us and tell us exactly what they want to do. But, you know, I don't, I don't want it to just surface and it's like, here it is. It's like the monolith, here we go again, you know? So if all they need to do is repeal the, um,
Finance Director.
The Finance Director, thank you, Bill. To me, that's the town council's job. It's the legal procedure. So draft whatever needs to be done, can it, make sure it's drafted properly so it's not defective in any way. And I think that's a town council issue. It's a legal matter. So these, might be a lawyer on the board. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, if I may, for.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, for clarification, the, um, the language being drafted for the repeal of the Finance Director bylaw, or the Finance Department bylaw is in draft form and being finalized by town council now. That is a separate part of this process. My understanding is that the, uh, the Government Study Committee is specifically looking at the bylaw itself and the powers and duties and responsibilities that are to be designated to the town administrator is the point that they're looking to, for clarification.
Okay. So then, so the drafting is legal work. They're not drafting. I want to make sure of that.
They drafted it.
They drafted the repeal? Although we're talking about the.
The repeal, yes. They, they have that ready to go. They're just finalizing it based upon answers that the Board of Selectmen provided back in October.
Okay. We adopted what I, I understand the TA possession, your duties. We adopted statutory language, which what, what do we want to deviate from? If anything, and I don't know why that's the Government Advisory Committee's issue. I think that ought to be a dialogue, maybe with you and us to find out, does the statute give you enough leeway and latitude to do your job without transferring all the power over into an appointed person? So that the Board of Selectmen has the final decision and up and down debate in the democratic system. If it ain't broke, why fix it? I'm not so sure that the, the default statute has anything wrong with it. I mean, I talked about maybe we added some planning, but we're just the higher town planner. So, you know, grant writing. Within the statute, my understanding is we could bring up pet projects of any kind. Hey, Rebecca, why don't you work on this? Right?
That is my understanding as well.
So what do we need them to do other than cut the food up on the plate, move it around, but not eat anything? I, I don't want to be disrespectful, but I don't understand what it is they're doing. It seems everything's done except for, it needs to get rubber stamped by state legislature.
Yes, but the town bylaw itself doesn't exist. And the town bylaw itself can hold a town administrator, um, to certain standards that are not expressed by the general statute that allows you. So the general statute allows you to hire a town administrator. It doesn't set the parameters for what duties and responsibilities are being delegated to that specific position. And the town bylaw in each community that has a town administrator has a bylaw that specifically lays out exactly how they'd like that person to interact, what authorities they have in union negotiations, appointment authority, hiring, firing, all of those types of things are laid out within the actual bylaw itself.
I think we could do that ad hoc. We could do that as, as it arises. If this board doesn't want to negotiate, might say, uh, uh, run with the ball and then we'll review it. I mean, but that could be done on a case-by-case basis. To put that and set it in stone, I mean, you're asking us to foresee the future.
I'm fine. I'm, I'm just relaying what I believe. That was the, the question. Do you want them to move forward with the town administrative bylaw drafting? Or are you all set with their original charges to taking it and getting it to the town council for their repeal and that's all you need them to do kind of thing? That's my interpretation.
Joe is asking for one of two things. Either one, review and approval of the most recent meeting and the announced termination of the government Study Committee charge. Or two, continuation of the charge with a focus on working with Attorney Goldberg for final revision in preparation for the Town Administrator bylaw to present it at a future town meeting. I, I, I think that that's something that the Selectmen, along with, uh, Town Administrator can handle, along with the attorneys.
Mr. Chair, I think the way it is, we have flexibility. There's five of us on the board. You know, if you set it in stone, that say, the Town Administrator is going to be the person to negotiate union contracts. Why would we want to tie our hands behind our back on that? It works as long as it doesn't. You know, and I'm not going to be here for long in the big picture, right? So somewhere down the road, somebody will be sitting there. They're like, who come up with this brainchild that we're five elected people, but we can't do anything because your bylaw, bylaw says the power is in the, in the bureaucrat. No disrespect to you, but I.
So you want to make a motion to one of the two.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't spoken yet.
You know what I'm saying?
I've been waiting.
But I just, I, here's what I think. I would like Joe and the Government Advisory Committee, if they want to, come before us and say, what are they thinking about? And I'm not saying they got something up their sleeve, but if the statute doesn't work, why and what do you want to restrict? What do you want to add? What do you want to add in a bylaw? And I know they might have a powwow and baby brainstorming. Maybe they don't have any idea. But I don't know that there's a need for it. Is it an exploratory charge? What is it?
You know, was it looking for a motion so that we haven't, we haven't had a motion.
Motion to table.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, you have not allowed me to say anything. You've given the.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So I believe that the town meeting made its vote clear to, to rescind the Finance Department bylaw. And I'm not quite sure why it's taken so long for this to be put forward. So I would appreciate a little follow-up and a shove maybe to say, get it done. I don't feel that there's any committee need on that part. I also know that during the early days when we were talking about this idea of having a town administrator that has now become reality, both with Bill Dunn as chairman and then under Mike Wood and now under Chairman Watson, one of the things we spoke of was to implement it under the special act that allows us to hire someone, but to give it, give this position a little time to evolve before we try to create any kind of a bylaw, if, even if we need one. Because I, I think the point is, um, well put that sometimes you cast something in stone and then you're stuck with it. Now, the Finance Director Department bylaw worked for about 20, 25 years, but there was a lot of input into that. So I would just slow it down right now and take a pause button and let's get through this first budget cycle and wait till a less busy time to try to decide if we need the help of a committee. Honestly, we may need the help of a committee because we already have a lot of work to do. But at this point in time, I can't see putting that forward with this is such a new position. I think we just need to get the loose ends tied up. Town meeting voted to rescind, um, that special act. I'm not sure why it's taking so long to just say. I'm not sure why it's taking so long to just say goodbye to it. And then, see what we have, see what, see how this is all working for us.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I know that they've already been working on a administrative bylaw, and it's been amended, and it's definitely something I think I would like to get my hands on to look at and review. Because without it, then we don't have anything to look at...
Yeah.
...to make a decision, on whether or not it's not flexible enough and needs to be more flexible. So, since it's already been done and there, I think, uh, we should get a copy of it.
Uh... Yeah, I guess it's still been in the works, though.
Uh, it says it's, uh, been modified by the attorney and has not been reviewed by the board committee on line, on, uh, number two. So, it's, it's there, it's been revised, it's in the works. I definitely would like a copy of what they got and see where it's going from there.
I will say, for just information purposes, I, I asked the, the same question, and they said that they haven't worked on the bylaw. They've only worked on the language to repeal the finance department language.
That's from the, from the town, um...
Get the hands off.
Hi. Go, go ahead, Mike.
Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptack Room. Um, as a member of the government...
Thanks. As a member of the government study committee, I can tell you that the committee spent about a year and a half developing, going through all the issues, going, uh, through other town, at least seven other town bylaws for a town administrator. So, a lot of effort was spent, and I would say that, uh, the committee is probably at the 95% level of that bylaw being written. It's been reviewed by, uh, an attorney that's on the committee and also by town council. So, it's, it's probably almost ready to go. But the idea was that, uh, obviously to repeal the finance director bylaw first, uh, hire a, uh, town administrator under the state rules, and then see if, after, say, a year went by, see if the town wanted to, under the special act implementation of the state, institute our own bylaw. And so, I don't know exactly what Joe wants to do more, but maybe finish things off. But I think the idea was to hand this off to the board of selectmen, and you choose what you want to do in six months or a year. That's my understanding of what, where it's at.
That's, that's basically what he's got written here. Uh, thanks, Mike, for the clarification. Uh, we need some kind of a motion to, uh, how to proceed. We table, we, uh, table with, uh, do we, uh, go with one of the two recommendations here from Joe?
How about number 2A?
Uh, continuation of the charge with a focus on working with Attorney Goldberg for the final revisions and...
No, no, 2A, just the...
Oh, 2A?
Yeah.
Um, I suggested allow the government study committee to, uh, at least one more meeting in view of the, of the changes, so that they can write a final report for the select board.
Right. It sounds like that's what we, what we'd like to see.
And at that point, Jason, I think we could get, uh, we'd get the report from them.
Yeah, as long as it's the town bylaws and not the repeal, because I believe the repeal is already in the attorney's hands that...
Correct.
Yeah.
So, can I make a motion, Mr. Chair, to just go along with the repeal of the finance director? Because that's just housekeeping.
Right.
They're two separate issues.
Okay, make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to have our attorney finalize the, whatever's necessary to repeal the position of finance director.
And, uh, is it, uh...
Commit it.
Is that, is that going to be with the, uh, study committee, or that with, with the hands of the board of selectmen?
I think the attorney and us is all that needs to be done. I don't understand why the, uh, we're using the, the, the government study commis- is a quasi-lawyer. I don't get it.
Okay, so, if we're at Dan's motion, uh, to continue and, um, have the, uh, the board of selectmen make the review outside of the study committee, am I correct on that?
You, you just said repeal.
If it's just a legal procedure, a formality between us and town council, that's how I'd like to act. I, I don't know that, I don't know that the government study committee, uh, I, I think they've concluded it should be repealed, unless somebody wants to tell me it should be repealed. Repeal it.
Repeal the, uh...
Finance director position.
Uh, I think we need some clarification.
But that language is already with the town council, right?
Yes, it is drafted, it is finalized. At the October meeting, there were some questions about, um, the Attorney Goldberg asked some questions, you all answered those questions. I checked in with Bill Hewig in December, asking, where's the, the, um, the appeal, so we can get it over to Senator Tar and Representative Mira, so we can get it filed. Um, there was some confusion, and then I believe Bill got sick. Um, so, Bill was not able to get back to me. He recently got back to me in January with the drafted bylaw. That wasn't the one that incorporated the answers. I referred him to the answers that were done back in October. I just sent those over to Bill again last week, and he said that he'd apologize for the confusion, and he will get, um, me a final document that we can present to the senator and the representative for filing in the state legislature.
So... Mr. Chair, I, I think...
Go ahead.
I don't think we should hold up the repeal of the finance director position...
Or not.
Even if the town, or this board, and everybody else ultimately decides we're going to go in the direction of a bylaw. Because that's going to take a lot more time, right? Unless it's canned and it's ready to go, and we're going to review it, it still has to go to town meeting, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
No, the, no, the bylaw, the bylaw.
The bylaw has not...
Bylaw, not the repeal. So, the repeal, I want to bifurcate these things.
But we don't need to, we don't need to vote anything. The town meeting already voted to rescind it. It's just town council's been sitting on it because of illnesses and...
And it's already with them.
So, we just need to push it forward.
Do we need to see it just to see the final?
I'd like to see the final thing that they, yeah.
See it, even in email form. I don't know that it has to be at a meeting. I want to look at it.
Yes, I'd like to see it.
And then, if there's no objection, it goes to Senator Tar, that's the next step?
Okay.
So, do we need a motion on that?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion on that.
Done deal. I, I, I think that the crux of the issue here, if I understand it correctly, is they, the committee wants to take this, the, the bylaw portion...
Yes.
...to the goal line.
Yes.
And I say, because they've already done all the heavy lifting...
Yeah.
...let them carry the ball across the goal line, because they're going to present it to us at the end of the day, and we get the final say, right?
Yeah, I understand.
And this is way down the road before we let, uh, go to town meeting. So, let them continue with the heavy lifting, and, and, and they've already done the work, they've already put in the time.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, they've already invented the wheel.
I don't want to dismiss them, but if they want to change the, the default statute for some reason, I want to hear, they should present it.
But that's, that's, that's what they want to do. They want to finish their work and present it to us.
Okay.
And I think we should just allow them, instead of heavy, instead of reinventing the wheel...
All right.
...that they've been rolling around for two years almost.
But my, my sense is that muddle the water, and it's, it's been asked, how come it's taken so long with town council to get this thing done? It should have been done right after town meeting, in my opinion. Once it was ratified at town meeting, get the lawyer to do his lawyer thing, and then send it over to Bruce Tar.
Right.
So, here we are in January, so can we get that thing across the finish line?
Okay, why not?
Rebecca's time.
Two separate things, though.
Two separate things, okay.
Right.
And I withdraw my motion, then if we don't need a motion, just...
Okay.
Well, we, Mr. Chair, um, I'd like to see the committee, um, give us, you know, have a meeting and give us what they're working on, say it's a draft. Um, but I, I want to allow the time for this position, this newly hired position, to be here for a while before we start to, to really make it, you know, iron locked on things, because, um, I want to get some feedback from our town administrator and, and from other department heads and everybody else involved in this whole new form of government. So, I would, I would like to say, you know, off the top of my head, I don't want to see this at this year's annual town meeting, and I don't want us to post up drafts because it confused everybody.
Yes.
All right? It confused the public because the draft had things that we hadn't decided yes or no on. So, I think that, uh, when it comes time to put things to the public, we should maybe ask them yes or no questions. Don't, don't post another draft bylaw, because there would seem to be a lot of friction created by people who thought that was that, and it wasn't that. Yeah. So, go a little more slowly.
Phil?
I, I, I agree with you, Kathy, and you know what? We can sit on this forever, once we get it. We don't have to take it anywhere, anytime soon. You know what I mean? We can get it, we can sit back, we can think about it, we can work with Rebecca and see how it works, we can under, you know, understand the flexibility or the constraints in the language. We can modify it as we go along. So, we don't have to present this at any time we don't want to, or we're not ready to.
Right.
But if we have the document, and they've already done all the lifting, it gives us the time now to sit back, review the document, and, like you said, over time, how does this fit into the structure that we want to create for the town administrator?
Right, but do you still want, I mean, it's hard to get anybody to volunteer to do anything anymore. So, we do have a committee that's still willing to do some work, so if we give some feedback, I mean, let's be honest, we're pretty stretched thin.
That's why I said let them continue.
Right, yeah, so that would...
We're blessed with that, that they want to do the work.
Right, right. Let's get the thing rescinded, and then go a little slower and get, get, let us have some input into it as they go. And Rebecca, of course, more importantly, the new town administrator.
So, I'll make a motion that we allow the, the government study commission to continue their work with the town bylaw portion of the, um, town administrator, with the understanding that we don't have to bring it to town meeting until we're ready.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
A friendly amendment, not, not with the involvement of town attorney until we say so.
Oh, I'll stick to that.
Because that was another confusion point.
Friendly, another friendly amendment.
Go for it.
I don't know, you're not so friendly sometimes.
I'm always friendly. People just push my buttons, it's not my fault. That, nothing gets posted unless it's labeled, like every margin and heading and footing.
Draft.
No, but not just draft, but for public comment and feedback or something like that. So, it's not draft like this is going to be, or an assumption. I don't want anything conclusory, like, oh, it's a draft, but I'm stuck with it because I have no say, I'm apathetic, you know? No. Contact Joe DeMore for discussions, you know? For public feedback. Tell us what you think. Just label it. If we're going to throw it out there, you know, I, I want it to be more of a fishing line than a billboard, you know? Uh, let's see what we get.
You agree with that? Uh, Bill?
I, I don't even understand it. I thought the other draft was misleading, and I'm not accused of...
It was a fishing line, not a billboard.
But it said draft, and it was tiny, you know? Well, I want to, uh, 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 elicit and solicit feedback from people whether or not they want to give the TA more power. That is the crux of the issue, because the statute's super flexible and the rest of the power of the board of selectmen, and it's an ebb and flow situation. It's a delegate authority from the elected officials to the, uh, administrator, okay? So, my, my gut feeling on this is that somehow they want to transfer some of that decision making over to the TA and set that in stone, so that the board of selectmen... And again, there could be arguments for it, that the board of selectmen shouldn't get involved in personal matters, because it could be politically driven or something, you know? Uh, I don't know that that happens in this town.
Man, that's all speculation, but anyways...
Right.
Uh, draft, but the, the word draft implies not final copy, right? So, if we label it, well, okay, so we don't, we put it in big...
For public comment. I want it to say for public comment. Draft for public comment.
Okay, I'll agree with that.
Thank you.
All right, that's an easy, simple.
Motion on the floor. And there was, there was a second?
There was like two amendments.
With the friendly amendments, two.
Show we're easy, are you?
Further discussion?
No.
None? All in favor?
Beautiful.
Unanimous? Thank you. Uh, next, approval of the application of surplus bond proceeds to debt service. We have a paperwork on that?
Yeah.
Um, Rebecca, you want to, uh, further explain that one?
Um, just that we have proceeds on the outstanding bonds as listed below, and, and we need an official vote from the board of selectmen to be able to allocate those. And we are looking to be, um, apply them to, uh, the payment of debt services on the bonds.
Will that close out any of those?
Uh, it will not close out. It's just the, the proceeds that were, they're generated from the bonds themselves. So, the proceed, the, the, the monies we get back, we can now, we can reinvest them back into our debt services, but we need an official, um, vote from the board of selectmen in order to do so.
Okay.
A motion to approve the application of surplus bond proceeds to debt service.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Next, administrative coordinator position. Uh, this has come up, uh, the last couple of meetings, uh, that, uh, I, I, I think we need to, uh, go with a, uh, request, uh, to post a position of administrative assistant to the board of selectmen, uh, probably a, uh, 19 hours a week, uh, assist the board of selectmen, and, uh, then, uh, additional work, uh, like maybe as a floater in different offices. Uh, and the, a, a town administrator is, uh, spending time doing, uh, clerical work that, uh, we shouldn't be paying her to do clerical work, that should be at another, another position, and, uh, we need somebody to serve, uh, as administrative assistant to the board of selectmen. Uh, I think we probably, Rebecca can, uh, probably has at her fingertips a, uh, job description, uh, and, um, somebody that we take some of the workload off of, uh, her, so that she's not working beneath her pay grade. Uh, any, any thoughts on that from anybody?
Dan?
She needs help, we need help. And, uh, it's bigger fish to fry than posting things on the billboard out front and maintaining the website, so it's, it's kind of not why we have a TA.
Uh, what, uh, what do we have in the budget for that? To refresh my memory?
Uh, it's $24,000.
Okay. What are we going to get for that? We got a half a year?
That's what was allocated. It was originally lower, and then there was an amendment at town meeting in June to increase it to 24.
And there's nothing we can do about that right now, so we're going to have limited hours on hiring somebody, if we got to give them an hourly rate that...
That, that's what's left in there?
Um, I don't, I can get what's, a balance of what's left. I know that's what was allocated.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
You go ahead.
I mean, it, she might have a job description, but I don't, I think we had several, uh, meetings, uh, back and forth, and I don't know that we ever agreed upon a, uh, an hourly. So, you know, I mean, we could put commensurate with experience and see what people want, and if we can afford them, I guess, uh, that might be a meeting of the minds. If we can't afford them, then I guess we, you know, we just, uh, go without. But it's a tough job market, and, uh, prices are higher. It's, uh, inflation going on here, so, um, I think we need to find out what we have to spend, and then, you know, we, it doesn't hurt to put that fishing line out there and see what we get, uh, without, you know...
We go with that fishing line again.
Yeah, you know, I just, I don't know, I'm thinking about fishing this, uh, you Yeah, you know, I just, I don't know, I'm thinking about fishing this, you know, six, seven degree weather, I just, you know, Massachusetts for the birds, I want to fly south. But anyways, some people might want me to, but I don't-
I have a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Well, the administrative coordinator position was initially created because our finance director was leaving and we needed somebody under the supervision of the, of the finance director to be here and take, take phone calls and this and that, because our finance director agreed to stay on and come in one Friday for like several months. And at that point, with that kind of supervision, from my observation, it worked very well. It was only 12 to 14 hours, but it worked very well because the supervision was there on a daily basis as to what this position was supposed to be doing and what the expectations are. So, I would suggest strongly that if we bring in any kind of an administrative coordinator position, it should report directly to the TA and we'll get the most bang for the buck that way, because you need to have somebody there on a day-to-day basis that can direct this position as to what they can do. You can't just walk into municipal, unless you've been at town administrative coordinator somewhere else, can't just walk in the door and know what's going on and why people are making warrants and why they're making agendas. So, it would need daily oversight, and I think if it's going to be productive and not require a lot of back and forth about what the position should be doing, we should let the TA give us a definition of what this position could do and how many hours a week. Because she's gonna know best what needs to be done here that could be done by an administrative coordinator. That's the best person in the room that knows what could be done.
Anybody else? Phil?
Yeah, from what I see, you have a big problem already. Out of that line, we only have $13,000 remaining, that's through October. So, if we've spent any money subsequent to October, I don't know, I'm hoping to get these report through December any day now, as it's almost the middle of, beyond the middle of January. But I don't know what we're gonna get for 13 for the next six months, how that breaks down, it can't be, it can't be much. So, I agree with Selectman McDonald, I've never seen a tight labor market in my life. Wages are definitely being shoved skyward because of the tight labor market, and 13,000 divided by what do we have left in weeks? Not quite 26, so we'll say 22? $590 a week, I don't know what we're gonna get for that. And then if you divide that by what we're gonna pay? $19 an hour?
Jason?
Doesn't leave a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, the most important thing, especially since we're in the budget, budgeting season, is to plan for what we need moving forward, and not necessarily looking at what we have left. Because we can struggle along with what we have left until the time comes, because we still have to find somebody, we still have to hire them, and that takes time. So, I think the most important thing is, is we get the information of what Rebecca thinks is needed, so we can review it, look at it, and then give our input, and how much the position should pay, and what the annual rate will be, because that's what we're gonna be asking the town folks for budget coming up here in April.
So, I make a motion, we table this item until such time as Rebecca can come back with a job description proposal.
A motion to table, is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
Motion, yeah, motion and a second, all in favor of tabling? Opposed?
Better talk a little-
Passes. Three in favor, two opposed, motion carries the table.
I'll give you some time Rebecca.
Town administrator time.
Just wanted to discuss, that's all.
Town administrator time, Rebecca, you're up.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I just wanted to update you all on a couple of things. At the last meeting, we had discussed the American Rescue Funds project. I'm sorry for a little bit of the disorganization, I thought we were gonna be talking more about the test kits and also giving some direction on the premium pay, but the conversation kind of evolved a little bit more. I have been working on a spreadsheet detailing all of the projects that have come forward through my office and in town hall in the three categories that were assigned. I've also been putting together a detailed document on exactly what those projects are, some background regarding those projects, what it is the departments are specifically looking to accomplish and how they feel as though this meets the eligibility requirements of the act itself. We've also just received additional information of a final rule that was issued that will allow communities to use up to $10 million of their allocation to lost revenue, which was not necessarily the case. Originally, you had to go and prove that you had lost a certain amount of revenue, and again, that calculation is a little inflated, but based upon that calculation, you could use X amount of your allocation towards the lost revenue. They just reported that that is no longer the case under the final rule. Communities can use up to $10 million, so we can essentially use up to $2 million, our allocation of $2.1 million under lost revenue, which is the most flexible of the categories and gives us the most leeway. So, I am starting to expand with that list, but given budget, time, and a lot of things that are happening, it fell on the back burner a little bit, and the chair was kind enough to not have me have the final product for you for this evening, so again, thank you, but I will have that for you shortly. Then the other updates, I just wanted to let you know that we had our kickoff meeting with the consultants for the comprehensive master plan. The planning board will be assembling a committee under their charge under Massachusetts general law to have a comprehensive master plan. They are hoping to have five to eight members, so if there's any Board of Selectmen member that would like to be appointed to the, or to be added to that particular committee or any residents that are listening here, to reach out to me specifically, and I will get the names and information over to the planning board for their determination at their February 1st meeting. We are in a little bit of a rush because the grant under the urban agenda program is to be completed by June 30th, 2022. That's not necessarily going to be the case, based upon the fact that a comprehensive master plan takes extensive amounts of time. The secretary under that department has stated that they're looking to allow communities who have also received comprehensive master plans extensions, but we do need to establish that committee in order to hit the ground running, so that will happen on February 1st. Also, I just wanted to let the board know that the fire department has recently received two grants, one of them being a fire service grant for $12,960 for mobile radios, and the second, a regional assistance to firefighters grant for $22,758, and that is going to be to get them all on the same radio frequency with other communities in the surrounding area. So, they worked hard on those and it was very, very nice to see that they were successful. Also, to let the town know that we have submitted an expression of interest through the community one-stop program. That is the program that we originally applied for the Mass Works Grant for the signalization on Route 97, and then also for the urban agenda for the comprehensive master plan. So, we on this round are applying for a feasibility study for 150 Center Street, Strawberry Fields, to see exactly what we can do with that particular parcel, hopefully taking into consideration the Valley Screw property and anything we can do to rectify that particular situation. So, we are moving forward with that, and hopefully we will hear back in February as to whether or not the state feels as though that would be a solid application. If they agree, then we will be moving forward with an application and hopefully get an award in the fall. The other update is to let you know that based upon the appointments that we have made this evening, like Selectman O'Neil alluded to earlier, we are just about filling all of the vacant positions that we had in town hall. We now have a public health nurse, we now have a council on aging director, we have a town treasurer clerk, assistant town treasurer collector, treasurer collector. The only outstanding one was the planner, which we just had appointed Annie, and now we just have the administrative assistant. Also remaining is the assistant town clerk. The clerk, Beth Kunniff, is actually conducting interviews this week, so hopefully that position will be filled shortly as well. The other last few updates is just to let you know that we are working with Harper's, our payroll company, to get our time accruals for employees, except for the police department, since they have their own specific system on the paychecks. This was something that we had been working on originally. We finally got a contact over at Harper's, and they said that there is a little bit of a pushout, and they're gonna be contacting us in February and hopefully beginning the process in March. So, that all being said, hopefully it will be a successful turnaround. I know some others, I know when Sarah Hunter was here, she had mentioned it might take a six-months timeframe. Hopefully that won't be the case, but we are prepared, we put our name in the queue, and we're ready to go. And then lastly, just to give you an update and let you know that the, since the cable committee is no longer kind of a committee, I've been working with Chris LaCory and his team to put together more information on assembling kind of a department, so that we have something, some form of structure, so we can establish a mission statement for them, goals, what is it they do, what is it they're looking to do, job descriptions for both Chris and his, his technical team, what their programming is about, what they hope to achieve, and then put together some type of formal structure. And we hope to present that to the board in the coming weeks.
So, you're looking at, like we had, we had talked about before, like a cable TV department?
Yes.
Okay. And, yeah, we had talked about that, and then they'd have a, they'd have a budget and, okay.
Because currently, they get their money under the cable contract and, you know, the peg monies that we allocate every town meeting for a certain amount, and then they get to utilize those funds after they get approval from the Board of Selectmen, but we're just hoping to add some more structure to that.
Good idea. Thank you for the report, and you did that in one breath. Any questions for Rebecca on what she just?
I'm afraid to ask whether our cable contract is settled.
I did ask, I did ask the attorney about that as well in talking with Chris, they had said that it had not yet been finalized, so I sent an email over to Bill Hewig again when we were talking about the other stuff, and he said that he was gonna reach out to them because he had not heard back from them in a little while.
Because when we did submit that, we did submit kind of a master plan budget, so that might be helpful to you to look at that. I can't remember exactly what we put in it, but we came up with something, Chris helped us put it together, to justify the money. So, that might be a starting point for the department budget.
Okay, thank you for the report. Oh, you had a question, I'm sorry.
I did, I did.
Go ahead.
Well, Kathy, done?
I'm done.
Hi Rebecca. It's me.
Didn't know that.
Doesn't look like me, huh?
Doesn't look like it.
I got my annual haircut. Police and fire were here last meeting, if you recall. The police gave us some numbers on hours that police worked and first responders and the fire department, I think they had a different format. I think it'd be, in the spirit of, you know, doing the right thing, to, funds available, you know, to reward the first responders, with something. I don't know what that something is, I think that's a point of discussion, but, you know, for the people that stuck it out, I think they should be rewarded, and some people couldn't stick it out for whatever reasons, but other people bailed out. Seems like half the people are working, half aren't. But if the funds are available and that 2.1 million, I think we ought to have a discussion on what we want to cob off and how we're gonna allocate it, but I think something ought to be paid to police and fire that's worked pretty hard through the pandemic. I don't know that I want to exclude everyone else, but I think the priority would be first responders. If you exposed your, yourself personally and, you know, comes with risks, picking up people that are sick that have COVID, then I think there's something to be said for that. That's, I don't know that I want to call it hazard pay, but it's kind of hazardous duty. So, you know, I don't know if you have numbers, if we're prepared or we need time to have that dialogue, but, you know, I think what the chief of police or the fire chief brought before us, I think we ought to look at it, I don't think we ought to put it off for months or even the town meeting. I think as soon as we have good numbers and we can make intelligent decisions, then I think we ought to act on that. And maybe if we need to wait and see, maybe, you know, it could be, show them our sentiments with something now and maybe something later, once all the numbers and the dust settles, so to speak. But that's, that's my idea on that, I don't know what you think on that timeline.
I did, I did do that, so I did put together a draft with the information, and I did put together all employees at a max of $2,000 for a total allocation of premium pay of $140,000. That includes all employees, but like you're saying, I thought that that would give you an ability to then have that conversation amongst yourselves as to how that would look and how that would impact, and also look at the other projects. And the most important thing I want to mention of both the projects is that I don't want to wait when we have this discussion, I want to have it sooner rather than later, because some of them is our capital projects, and that will impact how we approach our budget this fiscal year, if we're able to fund capital projects that we were not able to fund previously because of the pandemic. So, making sure that we highlight those, and there's plenty of them being here in town hall, infrastructure improvements, the lead situation over at the school, all of the projects total above the $2.1 million that we're gonna be allocated. So, I really want to make sure that I'm giving you some thoughtful information, because you will have to make those hard determinations as to what you want to fund and what you don't want to fund.
Was your 2,000 figure based on a full-time?
On the-
Did you distinguish part-time, full-time, or was it based allocated on hours or it's just per employee, no matter whether it's part-time?
Because there was a lot of concern about how it was being calculated, an officer would be exposed, how was the officer exposed, if the officer had to get out of their car and issue a ticket, like, and the, the conversation based upon, you know, firefighters were calculating theirs by their on-call, like their on-call, like had to be their time, whereas the police were just counting all of their time, and there was some confusion as to how those times should be accurately captured. So, capping it at a, at a flat rate seemed to be sufficient for those individuals that were eligible, without penalizing one over the other.
No, I understand, there's a different, I guess, dynamics to each job, you know, if, you know, but if somebody works, say, part-time 100 hours and the other person worked 500 hours, I mean, is that equitable to give them both $2,000? I mean, that's, you know, so I'd probably go down the road of the full-time is X and the part-time is Y, I mean-
I can put an option together for that.
You know?
Like a minimum? If we put that on the agenda for, for the next meeting, will you be ready in time?
I will try my absolute best.
Mr. Chair, if I could-
Convince me, go ahead. I don't want to make a ton of work for you, okay? But if it's easy with sorting on the spreadsheet to come up with a tiered system, you know, less than half-time X, more than half-time Y, full-time Z. If you could give us like, you know, A, B, and C, I think a tiered system would be the, at least give us the option.
Yep, of course, I can do that.
It's up to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rebecca? None. Thank you. Presentation, Selectmen's time, Jason, you have anything? Selectmen's time? Nothing?
Not today.
Dan, do you have anything?
I got a lot of things.
Make it short.
We talked about cable tonight. I brought it up before, you know, and I just, I thought it'd be nice if the, you know, the Christmas concerts and all that stuff would be on the cable other than watching reruns of us and other boards. I'd like some more community-like activities on the cable.
I just ran that by, I ran that by- Chris?
Right.
Thank you very much.
And again, I like, you know, because I got kids, I don't want people to think I'm super biased, I'm a little biased, but I like sports and basketball and baseball, but it could be other things, I don't care what it is. But I think there should be a mix of, you know, board meetings and then community stuff, you know? It'd be nice to see the kids singing on there and see life in the town, I think it'd be healthy for everybody, and who doesn't like putting the TV on and looking at the kids or something like that, you know, and seeing your kids singing at a play, or seeing your kid kick a soccer ball or something like that? Who doesn't like that sort of thing?
It's in the works.
You know what I mean?
It's in the works.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to welcome the newest member of the family, Wyatt Wesley O'Neil, born January 9th, seven pounds, 15 ounces. Yeah, I know, another one. Spent a few days in the hospital, but thankfully, he's, he's gonna be okay. Very important, so hopefully everybody's paying attention right now. At the last town meeting in December, I found out that I was no longer a registered voter. That happened because I did not fill out the town census. I filled out the online US census that time, and as a result, I was removed from the voter list or places as inactive voter. So, I want to throw out a warning to all and everybody out there in Groveland, if you happen to do the same thing I did, you may have been placed as an inactive voter. So, when you come to vote in May, you may be told you are no longer registered to vote. So, I implore you to check out your status before May to make sure, if you want to vote, if you want your voice heard, that you are eligible to vote, that you are- heard, that you are eligible to vote, that you are all set and that there are no hurdles or incumbences to your voting. So please check that out. Make sure that you're still registered if you happen to make the same mistake I did. What you thought filling out the federal form would find its way down to the municipal level, you'll find out like me, you're wrong. It doesn't happen. I don't know why.
That's intriguing.
Yeah, that was. That was a real kick in the head. So I don't want to see that happen to anybody else. So please just reach out to the town clerk and make sure that if you're one of those individuals, that you are still registered to vote if indeed you wish to vote. And then one last thing, a quote from ancient Greek philosopher Plato, I found very profound. And it says, "The measure of any man is what he does with power." Think about that for a minute. Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, I just wanted to thank our new town administrator, Rebecca. Having worked with Jason on these two contracts, it was it was grueling. And I'm so happy that we have a town administrator now who knows how to do this more effectively and more efficiently. And it's clear that the town meeting made exactly the right decision to go forward with the town administrator. The evidence is clear. We are getting grants. We are getting all the town work caught up. We are getting fully staffed. This is all great news for everybody that lives in Groveland because it's going to be running more smoothly. And anything's possible now. I think we're looking at a really bright future. And I just wanted to say thank you because I know often we're so busy asking you for things and asking if this is done or that's done, I forget to say the simple thing of thank you. Appreciate all the hard work and extra hours you've put in. It's really, it's really wonderful. Thank you.
Ditto.
Thank you. And I don't have anything. Next meeting. All the unfinished business, Board of Selectment policies and procedures due to the late hour, I think we ought to put this one off. Table this until the next meeting.
Of course.
Kicking the can down the street, but one more street wouldn't hurt.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table and a second. All in favor? Tabling? Opposed?
Bill, thank you, Bill.
Okay. Three in favor, one opposed, and one not sure.
Boss to go to midnight.
Doesn't care.
Okay.
Do you have one other thing? I don't know if we can do this or not.
Yes, I was going to do that under items not reasonably anticipated, which is up. No. Go ahead. This is, we received a request from Colin Stokes, the superintendent of the water and sewer department. He wanted to have Mike Wood appointed to the water and sewer board to, to the next town election, to the seat that the late James Sheehan had held for almost 20 years.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Wood of Eight School Street to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second for Mike Wood to be on the water and sewer board until the next election. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four in favor, one opposed. Correspondents? We didn't have any.
No.
We had the ladies from the garden club here, but they left. Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn at 9:06 PM.
Second.
Motion and is there a second? Second. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the board will be Monday, January 31st, 6:30. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brett, for showing up. Thank you, Mike. Did you volunteer for something along the way? I think you did.